... Some kind of disease spreading around.
Okay, go ahead.
What's Trevor's last name?
What?
We're going to call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this November 21st, 2023 at 5:01 PM. We'll begin with roll call, Mr. Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette.
Here.
Commissioner Corbett's here, Commissioner DeLoach.
Here.
Commissioner Loper.
Here.
Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
Everyone's in attendance, we do have a quorum. I'd ask everyone if they please rise for the invocation given by Commissioner DeLoach and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for many blessings. Thank you for allowing us to gather here this afternoon. Please be with us as we make decisions for the county moving forward. Please help us remember that all good things happen through you, Lord, and we ask that you be with all of our world leaders, state leaders, and local leaders. And in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five on the agenda is agenda approval, consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, is there any corrections or additions to the current agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we're evolving, we will have the removal of the appearance on the agenda for Ms. Melissa Calhoun at 5:10. And we are apparently adding a final plat and warranty deed for Pine Brook subdivision.
Would that be in a new business number 20?
It's going to be new business number 20.
Just to clarify, that was intended to be on, there was some back and forth on some league and it may have got hung up with some kind of some internal personnel changeover issues that caused it to get pushed back.
And what is that, a final plat?
Final plat and warranty deed. It's Pine Brook Phase One.
What is it again, sorry?
It's a final plat and warranty deed for Pine Brook.
Pine Brook.
Phase One.
Where's this located?
It's located on Blue Jay Road.
We can put that at the end of new business, is that what?
It's going to be new business number.
Number 20 under new business?
Number 20.
And I'll tell you what, we talked about it, Mr. Steph, and I'm going to go ahead and ask, and with the board including that, the tabling of item number three under unfinished business till our next meeting of November 5th, December 5th. That's the funding of the Live Oaks Library, I think we need to have that workshop first. Talked about waiting to table that when it came up, but let's go ahead and add that to a tabling in our agenda, remove that.
Oh, okay, sure, sure.
So we make some motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of the appearance, adding of number 20, also the tabling of item number three and unfinished business to December 5th. Is there any other changes or corrections to the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. DeLoach. Second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows we have our agenda. We have the minutes before us, you've read those, are any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Loach, second Mr. Loper to approve the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows the minutes are approved unanimously. Welcome to everyone who's in attendance tonight, comments shall be to the agenda items only, please, if you would, should you wish to make remarks, come to the microphone, clearly state your name in the microphone so we can have a record of your attendance, and if you can keep your comments for two or three minutes, that helps everyone who wants to have a chance to speak to be able to speak. Have a lot on our agenda, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak as much as we can allow. With that, all the documents for this meeting are located in the clerk's office and also on the Board of Commissioners website, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to prepare for tonight's meeting. With that, we're going to move into item number 10 under our agenda, which is the consent agenda. These are items that are routine in nature with no discussion, should need to rise for debate or discussion, we'll remove that item by motion from the board and we'll put it in our new business and consider it there. We have one item under the consent agenda, and I'll read it. It's an agreement, consideration to approve an amendment to the Coastal Incentive Grant Award Agreement for the Stormwater Plan, extending the timeframe for the master plan completion.
Next motion to approve is read.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Loper, second Mr. DeLoach to approve the consent agenda as read, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows consent agenda is approved unanimously. That'll move us to our unfinished business we had from the last meeting, several items there. The first one is a policy, consideration to approve and publish an update to 2.15 travel, employment, and Board of Commissioners expenses, Section C guidelines. This is number three for mills and miscellaneous, and number one, per diem allowance and human resource standards of practice. If you can give a real brief what the differences are because we went over the last time.
Sure, so it's only a couple little minor changes highlighted in your draft that was attached. Basically, we're just changing some of the wording, we would like to go to a government website, which updates every six months due to inflation and stuff like that, and keeps us in guidance with IRS guidelines, so we would just like to make the request to change and update the policy to that.
Okay, any questions, discussion, or a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Burdette, second Mr. Kiefer for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking care of that for staff and everyone. Item number two, consideration to approve the second reading to amend part two of official code, chapter 10, article four, animal care, 10-112, keeping a file of Effingham County Code ordinances. This is dealing with our chickens.
Chicken ordinance.
Chicken ordinance. You want to?
You want to talk chicken again?
Actually, we've already been through it, we just need a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Loach, second Mr. Burdette, approve the second reading of the chicken ordinance, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Item number three, consideration to approve an intergovernmental agreement, which has been tabled. Yep, yep, it's been tabled to the next meeting, so we'll go to number four. The planning board recommends approving an application by Mariner Group LTD as agent for Robert Fletcher Waldire and Lynette Waldire, request is on plus or minus 44.509 acres located on Blue Jay Road, AR1 to R3, to allow for a multifamily residential development, map number 326, parcel number 17 in the first district. Decision on this was postponed from November 7th. If you remember as a board, we agreed at the very end to postpone this because we wanted to make sure, one of the questions was transportation, and if we didn't get T-Splas, all the planning and design that we've planned for improving transportation would not happen, so we thought we needed to make sure that was something constituents wanted, they did approve the T-Splas, and then there were some other areas that we thought we could take some time to look at, and I've asked Tim to go ahead, he and I have been keeping in touch on that, but if he could briefly just share what the other items were, I know one was the school, we've talked with Yancey, but once you shared what we've come up with and what we found, and then we'll.
And we were able to get some hard data from the school, and I know we've been kind of operating, you know, on just kind of verbal communications that we've had, and so, and this, for this particular region, this would, this would address where the students would go, and so, the Board of Education approved a 1,200 student elementary school on Blue Jay Road, that is expected to open in 2026. Currently, South Effingham Elementary Students is operating with 1,100 students with a capacity of 1,580 plus or minus, oh, I'm sorry, plus 10 to 20%, not plus or minus, plus 10 to 20% expansion beyond that, and then, and here's just where both high schools are, both high schools can grow to 2,500 plus students, plus 10 to 20%, and South Effingham High School is currently at 1,900 students, while Effingham County High School is currently at 2,100 students. Lunchtime questions came up, and this goes back, the current lunch schedule goes back to 2001 for early elementary schools, because they get out at 2:30 PM, and they started at 10:30 AM, you know, 22 years ago. Both high schools finish lunch at 11:45 PM.
1:45.
I'm sorry, 1:45 PM, and lunches for these schools do not start until 12:20, so that's right in the target where you want to be, it's been that way since 1999, and a contributing factor to that is the fact that they have to bus students from each high school over to the Career Academy, and so they got to basically accommodate lunch for those students in that purpose. So that's kind of where we are in school capacity. The only other comment that I got that's really more is the superintendent did express concern about the ability to find housing for teachers in the county, and so, he expressed that to me as well.
I did speak with him yesterday, Tim, he did tell me 2028 for the Blue Jay School.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, this was, it, this was in an email, so that actually makes more sense because it, it's not, they haven't even cleared the land on it yet.
Yeah, but I thought they were breaking ground in the next year on it, and that's 2024, you got 2025.
Yeah.
I'm still not, I think you told me that you thought it was 2028, but I.
Pretty sure he said 2028.
Yeah, but I think.
Mentioned a few different times.
This is what he said to us in a type thing, so.
Yeah, I remember, I want to go back and confirm.
Might we look at that, so.
Another good piece of data, and I'll be brief, I don't think it applies to what we're talking about now, but it'd be great to have what we're talking about today, some data for the housing, in other words, if we have a 400 unit development come onboard in a single family, on average, how many kids are elementary, how many kids are high school, how many kids are middle school, I don't know if we could access that for the different districts.
Right.
I would assume that a district like mine, that's very dense, is going to have, more have to have kids in their household, and somebody on North End of town probably would want to be away from all the hustle bustle, and they may not have any school age kids, so it'd just be nice to have as we're navigating density.
And particularly on apartment complexes, because if you recall what the gentleman said last time, it was predominantly one bedroom and two bedrooms, with a very, kind of a small percentage of three bedrooms, and so obviously your one bedrooms probably are not looking at any addition to the schools, and very limited on the two bedrooms, three bedrooms you may have the two students, but whereas the houses tend to be much larger in Effingham County, square footage and bedroom-wise, they're probably averaging about 2.1. I mean, that's what Yancey told me, they tend to use for single-family homes detached, a figure of 2.1 students per house.
Okay, well, we had a public hearing the last time, but I want to see if there's any other discussion or any desire for additional discussion.
One other point I wanted to bring up with, Commissioner Floyd asked me to address, and if you can go back to the map, later on the agenda tonight, we're going to, as a policy document, as we're pending the approval of the comprehensive plan, five-year review, which will be approved next year. We've been working with the board, we've gone through this in several, through a workshop and through at least two retreats, as well as bringing this up to, you know, in public meetings when we're meeting out with the public, either chamber or what have you, a policy document update to the future land use map, since our current one is, is very difficult to work with. The, the concept here really is that we want to show the areas of restriction for the higher intensity uses, and those higher intensity uses are obviously industrial and commercial and, and multifamily apartments, and to, to really show that we are, that we're not kind of scattershotting them throughout the county, that we're focusing them in certain areas that can, that have infrastructure to support them. This particular area, if you look at the square callout, the little circle there, is what we call a development node. Development nodes have to be essentially at a crossroads, and when those development nodes, they permit in residential areas, limited commercial use, which this already has, it's got two gas stations and a Dollar General, but it also permits within that development node, a higher density housing if water and sewer support it, and so that's why we kind of use, use this as, we hope to use this map in the future as, to replace the current future land use map when the comp plan gets approved.
Yeah, and part of that, I know we're looping our lines, we're running a reuse line and a sewer line, and we're trying to design to have the developers go to where we provide infrastructure versus them just putting up property and asking us to do a spider web, so we're trying to do a loop circle, and that's part of our loop.
Correct.
It's part of our future planning, okay? And I think if I remember correctly, also, this developer has got some skin in the game. Oftentimes, developers want us to do all the providing of the infrastructure, and they've agreed to provide infrastructure to support this.
Yeah, we're already running water there, so the pipes are already being installed in the ground, it's part of our Loop B project, but we don't have sewer there. The developer was informed that it's over a mile away on Highway 30, they've agreed to cover the cost of extending it to the, to the site.
Blue Jay.
What's that?
Blue Jay.
Yeah, so they're going to, they're going to extend it all the way to Blue Jay.
From Highway 30?
No, from, really, the, close to Zitrower Road on Highway 30, up to, up to the Blue Jay and 17.
But we have it up to Covered Bridge, don't we, already? So that's the information we were looking for, is there a desire for continued discussion from the board, or how do you want to be forward, are you ready to?
I just want to make a quick comment, the, and it's just the change that we're dealing with here in the community, one of the comments was that, you know, we're not representing the constituents, but we represent individuals, the, I would fight for these other landowners the way I would fight for these, these people, and just because 10 people don't agree doesn't trump the right of the individual that owns this property. Anybody that has a large piece of property, they've inherited, purchased, whatever, if they've got water and sewer on it, you're going to be approached by developers. It makes it very, very valuable, this family's decided to monetize that property, you decide to keep yours as it is, I understand that, but at some point, that property's going to change hands, either through your children or grandchildren, and you would want somebody that would stand up for your heirs' rights to do the same thing with that property in the future. These are the toughest decisions that we make, you lose friends over it, I feel like, and I still believe that individuals have the right to the best use of their property. And with that, I make a motion that we approve this with staff and planning board recommendations.
Motion to approve of staff and planning board recommendations.
I'll second.
By Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. DeLoach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it is approved. That'll move us to the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of the application by Mariner Group LTD as agent for Robert Fletcher Waldire and Lynette Waldire, to zone plus or minus 44.509 acres, located on Blue Jay Road from AR1 to R3, to allow for multifamily residential development. This is map number 326, parcel number 17, the first district, postponed from 11/7/23, do you have a motion to approve the second reading?
I make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Loper to approve the second reading, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows the second reading is approved also.
Who's second? Who was the second?
Second was Mr. Loper.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item number six, under unfinished business, the planning board recommends approving Mariner Group LTD as agent for Robert Fletcher Waldire and Lynette Waldire, requesting a variance to exceed the maximum building height allowed in the R3 district located on Blue Jay Road, R1, proposed zoning R3, map number 326, parcel number 17, in the first district. Now, remind me, was, did we include that variance discussion during our public hearing? We did? Okay, but let's.
No, we did. Did we?
Yes.
Okay, I don't recall.
I don't recall that either.
You discussed it all conjoint, together.
All right, well, let's have a brief discussion to see if there's any questions, I may see if there is someone from the public that wants to discuss that. Remind me again about the. Remind me again about the var, let's go through the variance, I think we focused on the zoning the last time, and let's focus on the variance for a few minutes with the board.
Yes, sir, so currently, the allowed building height in R3 zoning is 35 feet. The applicant would like to have a total building height between 55 feet and 60 feet. As you can see by the display of the buildings, will be three stories with proposed nine-foot-high ceilings. This is for aesthetic purposes, and to have higher design standards, staff is recommending alternative number one.
So basically, the three times nine is 27, so the additional footage, they want to have some kind of architectural top to make it look more, I guess, better, more attractive, or?
Uh, yes, sir.
Certainly, the lower the roof, the less the cost would be.
Uh, yes, sir, so they wanted the pitch to roof so that they can have the higher ceilings at that third level.
Okay. Is anyone tonight that would like to question this variance? I want to make sure we do have the public's comment on this variance.
I will.
Okay. We're just talking about the variance on this one.
Correct, the height of the building. Yep, no, we have already passed the rezoning to go from agriculture all the way straight to high-density housing, and so we've settled that matter, but we still have a discussion on how high these buildings are going to be and what it's going to look like in the area. So have any of you heard of the Majesty Building?
The what?
The Majesty Building? The Majesty Building is an 18-story, 300,000-square-foot office building. It's located at 123 East Central Parkway in Altamont Springs, Florida. It's also known as the I-4 eyesore. If any of you have ever been to Disney World and gone down to Orlando, you've seen a giant, let's see, what is this? 18-story building.
They've been building for about 10 years.
That, no, they started on it around 2000, they have yet to complete the building and occupy it because it was a huge office building built in the wrong place. And right now, you're talking about putting a towering apartment complex in what I don't refer to as the middle of nowhere, I refer to it as the middle of everywhere because we're 15 to 20 minutes out of minimum from any sort of town, and there's nothing nearby that looks anything like this. So I respect y'all's decision to allow the family to sell or do what they want with their property, but I would also like for you guys to respect the area and to not put up a huge eyesore.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get your name, please, for the-
Yes, ma'am, it's Emily Height.
Emily Height, thank you.
How high is the proposal? Is it 50 foot?
Um, so between 55 and 60 feet.
So they're asking for huge increase on this.
Can you speak to-
Is it going to be all the buildings?
Develop.
Yeah, come, come talk to us about this.
Yes, sir, Ian Smith of Mariner Group. Just to clarify, in, in B2, which has historically had the multifamily use allowed in the county, it is 55 feet. And when multifamily was added to R3, there was no adjustment to the height limit. Our building is a, is a standard multifamily building, nine-foot clear heights on, from ceiling, floor to ceiling, then you have the structure of the joists, and then you have a 612 roof pitch. So any three-story multifamily building that you would see on 21 or elsewhere, it's, there's nothing unusually high about this building.
So we used, we used to be under B2, which allowed it, but we've moved it under.
Yeah.
Help me with what he's saying with us now.
Well, I'm not, I, I don't know the actual history of why we chose 50 feet.
35 feet. 50 feet for the-
55, I believe.
I suspect that was intended to be eve height.
Yeah. And that, and that, and that could be the case, not eve height, not peak height. But the, it, it just hasn't come up because we haven't had that many three-story apartment complexes coming in the unincorporated area of the county. So the, the previous one that came up, as the applicant just said, actually came up under a B3 zoning. I believe B2, but- Okay, B2, came under a B2 zoning, so it didn't apply, didn't apply to it, the higher, the higher heights apply to that.
And when we moved the multifamily to the B2?
To the R3, the height didn't move.
Didn't follow it.
That's right.
Right.
We need to fix that. Probably need to make a correction there.
We probably need to look at our-
And, and we're, we're trying to address that when we do the, the classification standards that are, that are coming up after the first of the year.
I mean, my, my thoughts are, you could build a three-story building at 35 feet, but it probably is not going to look and be attractive and fit in with the surrounding area. It's not going to have a, it's going to be a flat roof, essentially.
Yeah, the, the project that came before y'all a couple months ago, our project, McCallan 21, is, that's exactly the same dimension.
Yeah, because it'll, it'll, it would look like a hotel versus a residential community. Yeah, so we need to correct our, our, we moved from B2 to, to R3, created R3 clever. We, we need to look at those again to make sure we're not restricting the architectural attractiveness of these units.
Right, and we may start, we may look at things at eve height rather than, so that way, you know, if you want to make roofs a little bit more architecturally pleasing, you're not restricted by total height, you can, you know, as long as you're below the eve height, you, we, we should be good, which I think is something we'll, we'll be looking at when we put the classifications in front of you.
As long as you have no finished space above 35 feet.
That's right, yeah, that's a caveat, right. It's not a fourth floor, it's, it's only, it's only roof peak.
Very good, appreciate it, thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to have a little extra discussion, even though we had the public hearing already, I wanted to get some additional discussion from the public and from our developer and from our board. Any other further discussion needed from the board? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve of staff and planning board recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve of staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. We'll move to the second reading, consideration to approve the second reading in application by Mariner Group LTD as agent for Robert Fletcher Waldire and Lynette Waldire requesting a variance to exceed the maximum building height allowed in R3 zoning district located on Blue Jay Road from R1 zoning proposed R3, map number 326, parcel number 17, in the first district. This is postponed from 11/7/23, motion to approve the second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. And Tim, I would like, as we're, we're through all our ordinances and correcting them and all, that transition from B2 to, it's not like it slipped through on R3?
Mm-hmm.
Because we, we, like I said, we don't want to restrict the architectural design to have quality structures, and we may have missed that, so it's good that that came up tonight. Let's look at that and correct that as well as the other things we're looking at.
Agreed.
Okay. Bring that back for a workshop and maybe a text amendment. All right, that concludes the unfinished business, so we move to our new business. Item number one, under new business, consideration to approve a PO 23-REQ-047 for the purchase of a vibratory smooth drum roller for the public works.
Yes, sir, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. So staff did publish a request for quotes for this item, three quotes were obtained. There is a little bit-
Before you give me the quotes, tell me what this is. I don't know what it is.
Oh, it's the, it's, it's, it's the drum roller machine that we use for chip sealing.
A roller, I mean, a, a-
For the road?
Like a, like a steam roller, you know what?
Okay.
So, but I will add one thing on it, it's when we purchase the one that we currently use right now, if you remember, we kind of did it on a budget, and we bought it used, and so on and so forth. One of the problems we've been having with that is calibrating the vibration to it, so we've been getting that washboard effect on our chip seal roads. This, if used properly, will eliminate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was for Reggie.
Sounds good. You also have drums in wastewater treatment facilities, so I just want to make sure which one it was.
Oh, no, this is not with that. There's also a bit of a narrative on your staff report, kind of explaining how the procurement process went, and there was a little bit of an error in the, originally, we thought we were awarding to one vendor, but once everything got situated, Yancey Brothers was the low bidder. EOM does recommend award to them, which is alternative one.
Have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Loper, second, Mr. Deloach, for alternative one, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, alternative one passes unanimously. Item number two is a purchase order as well, consideration to approve PO 23-REQ-045 for the purchase of two towable generators.
Yes, sir, so we did post an RFQ for this as well, and we had seven submittals, and the breakdown of pricing is in your staff report. EOM did review, and they recommend award to Long Country Machinery, staff recommends alternative one.
And I assume this is for the sewer? For the lift stations or whatever, so we can go around and do whatever?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding, because they did say it was for the water and sewer department.
Are we, are we moving to get generators in these lift stations so they can be all with SCADA and just flipped, and are these just backup?
The lift stations themselves should have generators on them already. I think these are for if they fail.
Backup?
And, but they could also be used for any system component that doesn't have a, doesn't have a power backup, like a-
Okay, and I assume we had a couple, and they failed, or they're failing, and they're old, is what the issue is?
Well, it's good to have them, and even for our buildings, because several of our buildings have transfer switches for generators with no generators, so.
Okay, so it'll supply a lot of needs.
So they'll be, they'll cover a lot of needs.
Okay, very good. Any discussion or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second, Mr. Floyd, for alternative one, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number three, consideration to approve purchase order 23-REQ-046 for the purchase of a Jetter trailer for multi, from Multitec Traders LLC for the public works department.
Yes, sir, so we did, again, we posted an RFQ for this, we received four quotes. During the review of the submittals, EOM noted that the bidder one and bidder two were bidding on the same unit. However, bidder one didn't include additional items that would have brought them to the spec we had posted. So EOM does recommend award to bidder two, which was Multitec Traders, which is alternative one.
Any discussion or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach, for alternative one, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously. Item number four. It's a change order, consideration to approve change order number three for task order 22-25-006 for the T-Splos intersection design and construction management with Robert Civil Engineering.
Yes, sir, so just as a recap, change order one was approved for the design and construction management of two of the intersections, Hodgeville and Scuffletown, and Hodgeville at Forest Haven. Change order two was then approved, which added right-of-way acquisition and the lighting design to the scope. That was the 400, roughly $400,000 change order. Change order three is being requested for the resurfacing of Hodgeville Road, which will also include the two intersections that were approved in change order one. So staff recommends alternative one.
Question, we, we've had some discussion about some possible errors in that design.
Right, on, on the utility relocation?
Yes, and, and that's under change order two, right?
No, change order two was right-of-way and, and lighting.
But I thought that was due to the fact they thought they had to move the utility lines, we needed more right-of-way.
I don't think that, that full design had not occurred yet, so it didn't, I don't think it included that right-of-way.
Yeah, I think it was just right-of-way acquisition in general for all of the intersections.
And right-of-way services, because that was not in the original contract, that was left up to us, and we just, we felt it would be better to have the designer coordinate right-of-way acquisitions for the roundabouts.
I thought some of that was also due so we could not shut down the intersection.
Well, it, it, it ends up, that, that hasn't been addressed yet, but it ends up after debate, we may not be, we may, may not be looking at relocating things after all. And so that still has to be worked out. So, but we hope to, we, we hope to at least have an answer by the next meeting on how we're moving forward. And if we don't have to move forward on that, then we don't have to worry about, obviously, the time expense and right-of-way associated with it.
All right, I just, I'm a little confused here though, Tim, because this, this, these change orders were now twice the price of the original contract. It's doubled. And so I guess, I was thinking in my mind that the reason the second one was so big, we thought we had to move our utilities, which means we had to have more right-of-way, which the designer could not have known upfront. But if it wasn't related to having to move the utilities, how did they miss it by $437,000?
Right-of-way was not included at all in the design contract, right? So because we were going to handle it, I guess, at the time, we thought we'd handle it in-house, similar, or, or a separate contract like we did with Effingham Parkway. So what we decided to recommend when we were proceeding closer to this is that it's just easier to have the right-of-way consultant being under the designer so that they can coordinate better. And so that was just general right-of-way, and that's, by the way, I mean, we did that based on, is it a per parcel, or?
I don't recall.
The $437,000, is that for buying the right-of-ways?
Buying the right-of-way.
Okay.
And, and the, any sort of legal work associated with managing that process.
That's not just their fee for administering the negotiation, that's including what we think we have to pay, so it may not come in that much.
May not come in that, no.
Okay, I feel a little better.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any of the, yeah, but, but if we have to buy right-of-way, you got to have it high enough that you can actually do it, you don't have to come back and do it.
I think that was based off the hours.
And I thought that was just for their fee for administering, man, that's what happens when you do change orders, their administration fees can go way up real quick, but, okay.
Yeah, and so this, this really was a scope change for us. Oh, I'll show, wait.
I think it was, it was based on the hours.
Oh, no, no, but this is, the, the, this is a, okay. Of that $437,000, $56,000 was related to the design of the lighting, right? Because when we originally did this, and I think I might have spoken with you about it, we didn't include-
I remember that.
We only included lighting on the G-dot ones.
Right.
It was that amount of lighting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was $178,000 of that 400 was related to lighting. And then the, the big bulk are pass-throughs, which are about $200,000, of which were for the, it's not for the right-of-way purchase, which, so I correct myself. It is for the appraiser, which is a pass-through, and the negotiator, right? So we're estimating 600, and they're, these may be way off, right? But they just put a bulk hours on it. We're estimating 690 hours of, of right-of-way, of appraisal for right-of-ways. And so if we don't use that because we don't need as much right-of-way because we're not relocating utilities, then we won't burn those hours. But of that 400,000, near, $437,000, almost 400,000 of it was the, was the lighting, the negotiator, and the appraiser. And those, like I said, the negotiator and the appraiser are pass-throughs that we're just doing through this contract because we want them to coordinate better. And my apologies, it's not for the land purchase, but then again, if we don't, if we don't use these hours, we don't pay for them on the appraiser or negotiator, and I have a hard time imagining that we're going to be using this amount of hours for appraisal.
The reason I was going back, it's already been approved, change order two, I thought maybe there might be some recouping if it was related to that realignment of the utilities, but it didn't sound as related to that, so.
Well-
We won't be recouping anything.
I think that, that quote, that, that 690 hours and however many hours it was for the negotiator assumed a lot more land than we're actually going to have to purchase now. So we won't need those- So we won't need those appraisal hours, and we won't need those negotiating hours.
So there might have been some thought processes that the appraisal and all that was related to the moving of some of the utilities, which we're not going to have to move maybe.
Right, because there's a lot more, we would have had to purchase some, you're refreshing my memory as I'm speaking. Because we would have actually had to purchase additional land to bypass the road during construction, which we're hoping we don't have to do now.
So, so the four hundred and thirty-seven, we may get some reprieve on that then?
Yeah, so that may, that portion may come in lower, because it's...
Should, if, if what we're hoping United talking about pays out, yeah. All right, very good. I'm sorry for the delay. I just got confused when I saw that big ticket number there. And probably in the future, we need to go ahead and put all that into one, you know, the, the right-of-way and the design, all that. That's the way to go in the future, because I think we get a better price if you do it.
Exactly, and we are working, and this was pre-program management. And so we're, on everything that we're doing in the future, we're making sure it's all in the scope.
Gotcha.
But this is one of those contracts that just has been lagging prior to us working with the program manager.
Because we got to get this done for the next school year.
That's right.
All right, any other discussion or motion for Alternative One?
Make a motion to approve Alternative One.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach for Alternative One, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. And we're on item number five. Just consideration to approve a purchase of service agreements between, purchase of service agreement between Coastal Regional Commission and Effingham County Board of Commission.
Yes, so you, as some of you already know, we've, Coastal Regional Commission, which gets its funding for transit through, generally through federal grants or state grants, had to cut back on its, some of its offerings. One of the cuts they made here was to eliminate the Walmart trip for the seniors at the senior center. We've asked how much it's going to cost just to have the county cover that. It comes in at a very reasonable cost, and we're just amending the IGA between the two of us so the county can cover that.
Any questions, discussion, or motion for Alternative One?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloach for Alternative One, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Item number six, consideration to approve a contract with Forest Group LLC for the SS four A action plan.
Yes, sir. Allison Bruton again. So Effingham County was awarded grant funds for the safe streets for all, safe streets and roads for all action plan. This will be done in accordance with the U.S. Department of Transportation guidelines. There were five proposals received. After a review from staff and Thomason Hutton, the recommendation is to award to Foresight Group LLC. So staff recommends Alternative One.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve Alternative One.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper for Alternative One, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Item number seven, consideration to approve amendment number one to the McDaniel Supply Company Agreement with Effingham County Prison.
Yes, sir. So McDaniel did submit this amendment to the prison staff allowing for two vending machines to be set up for inmate use. These machines will be the property of McDaniel Supply Company, and there won't be any cash used in the machine. The commission rate to be paid to the county will be twenty-five percent of the sales generated. Once the machines are operational, staff recommends Alternative One.
Question, discussion, or motion for Alternative One?
Make a motion to approve Alternative One.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach for Alternative One, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Item number eight, consideration to approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-nine to amend the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget.
Good afternoon. Mark Barnes, Finance Director. This budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-four has three items in it. It contains the additional funding for the new LMIG twenty-twenty-four road projects and the ongoing LMIG twenty-twenty-three road projects. It also allocates funding for the GDOT contract for the relocation of the water and sewer utilities related to Effingham County Parkway. That was per the agreement the county entered into back in August of twenty-twenty-one, was when that was last amended. And the last item there is, it allocates funding for the Fuel Island slab repairs that were done recently regarding the water leakage into the fuel container. Staff recommends Alternative Number One, approve the resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget.
And this is all being paid for by, just cash carryforward from our reserve?
Yes, sir. A lot of the, the ongoing, the LMIG projects, the, some of that, we received the funding last year, so it is in fund balance now, but it's grant basically. And then LMIG twenty-twenty-four, we received just this year.
Okay. Motion for Alternative One?
So moved.
Approve all number one.
Second.
I'll take Mr. Deloach's on this one. I heard a second from Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance, part number two, official code, appendix B subdivisions of Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
So the redline version of the subdivision ordinance has been sent to Stephanie for distribution. Please read it carefully, and send us any questions that you have, or send the county manager any questions that you have. We'd love to answer them as to what the changes are and why the changes are there. Thank you.
Well, we had a workshop earlier, and we all feel like we need some more time, but I think the staff is asking us to go and take a motion to approve the first reading, because we can always delay it, deny it at the second reading.
Absolutely.
So if that's okay, I'm going to entertain a motion for the first reading.
Does staff mind sending out the redline like a, like a?
Yes.
Yep, we're going to do it tomorrow.
Yeah, we're going to do it. It's a little easier.
It is. Well, it, it does get busy, but yes, it probably gives you a good idea. And again, there's a lot of changes in there. You'll see a lot of red, but some of it was just moving it from one portion to the other.
Yeah, redline would be what I'd want too.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
Motion by Mr. Deloach to approve the first reading.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows first reading passes unanimously. We look forward to that reading over the holidays.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I'm, sorry about that.
Item number eleven is consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance, ordinance for part two, official code, section, chapter forty-two, section forty-two point seven. Did I miss anything? I did. Sorry about that. Change that vote up here. Item number ten, on the new business, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend part two, official code, sec, appendix C, article five, table of permitted uses of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. Once again, we had the workshop. You're emailing to us the...
Yeah, the old ordinance, or the old part, right.
And the views, we can compare that. The staff is asking us to have a motion to approve the first reading, because we can always stop it at the second reading, or clarify it, or improve it.
Yes, sir. And this will be a lot easier read than the subdivision will.
Yep. The point is to keep it moving because we got so many things contingent upon this. It would, because you got to do the second reading at the next meeting. If we do get it all worked out, it'll provide more time for our comp plan and other things we're working on and other parts of the ordinance.
So we still have about four sections of the zoning ordinance left, and then we have the comprehensive plan left, and so that's going to take a while as well.
So that's why we're doing that tonight.
I think this is going to continue to grow perpetually.
Yeah, and we could tweak this, you know, with tax amendments when we realize we didn't, if we missed something.
It's going to be a living document. Motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the first reading, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows first reading is approved. Item number eleven now, consideration to approve the first reading of an ordinance for part two, official code, chapter forty-two, section forty-two dash seven, firearms of Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay. So this is a, a section of the ordinance, which is forty-two point seven firearms, section C. So this is a compromise that was gained with everybody involved in the process. It's really limiting it just to a dove hunt as far as what the ordinance says. And if it needs to be expanded in the future, then we can, we can amend it as well for any other hunts that are available in the county. It does maintain a lot of options.
Dove hunts with a hundred acres or more?
Yep.
With no, you don't need to get permission or anything.
Hundred acres or more for a dove.
Hundred acres or more, and it eliminates their, the, during dove hunt season, the applicability that they have to the nine hundred feet.
To the nine hundred, or three hundred yards, right.
I think that'll solve the issue that's before us, and we can, if we have another issue in the future, we'll address it. Motion to approve Alternative One?
Make a motion to approve Alternative One.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, I mean, Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve, consideration to approve a traffic, excuse me, a request for a traffic signal submitted by GDOT for the location of SR twenty-one Springfield bypass at McCall.
Yes, and so this is actually a request from GDOT for participation in the process. And the, they, they submitted a letter that's very similar to Ebenezer N twenty-one, our participation on that. We agree to provide power to the signal. In this case, our participation also, will also include adding a left turn lane on both sides of McCall. And so, and then GDOT will be responsible for the light. In, in district number four, this was a T-Splas twenty-twenty-three project, so that's your funding source. Staff is recommending Alternative One.
It's going to be a blessing when we get it.
That's right.
Yep. And I'm one of them because I'd use it every day. All right, motion for Alternative One?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloach for Alternative One, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Move to item number thirteen, and this is a public hearing. Staff recommends approving an application by Alex Long requesting a variance from section five point eight point six to allow for smaller lots in R six subdivision located on Blue Jay Road, map number six, zone, excuse me, zone R six, map number four one four, number three in the fourth district. Open the public hearing. Chelsea Field begin?
Yes, sir. So in January of twenty nineteen, this parcel was rezoned to R six. The applicant has recently applied for the final plat approval for this subdivision. After review, the draft plat, it was noticed that some of the lots did not meet that sixty-foot lot width requirement within the R six zoning, and so this variance is to rectify that. I think there was a misunderstanding of that lot width being at the road or being at building setback. The ordinance was unclear at the time of rezoning. So this variance is to make that clear and to, just to make sure that the applicants does, that the applicant does have that approval. So staff is recommending Alternative Number One.
Okay, how many lots is less than sixty feet wide in that subdivision?
So it will be two.
Is two less than sixty feet? How wide are they?
I'm assuming it's those two in the bottom corner there.
Yes, sir. So it's right here.
So they, they're the same, they're the same, they had the, the square footage as far as the acreage for in R six. They just didn't put the frontage at sixty foot, because they thought, as long as they had the square footage.
Yes, sir.
See those bottom two lots, Mr. Reggie?
Yeah, I see that.
That's what they're looking at there. And they're probably bigger than the other lots, actually.
So. So in twenty nineteen, did, did we, did we sign that when it comes to emissions? I mean, there's nothing changed. Why didn't we catch that if we okayed it?
So this is the final plat. That is actually number twenty on new business tonight. And so we wanted to make sure that the applicant got the variance for you before that final plat came before you.
They have called it.
We agreed on it in twenty nineteen.
The rezoning, sir.
Rezoning.
Just the rezoning.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, so they did, so, Mr. Reggie, they did catch it, and they're bringing it to us to see if they need to do a variance, because they got, they have two lots that meet the size requirement. They just don't meet the footage in the frontage of sixty foot.
The width is sixty foot at the building line, right?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
But because the ordinance was not clear as it is today, we just want to make sure that they're covered. So that's why we brought the variance before you.
Yeah. It, it's not a material variance. We, we've got it corrected for the future, so it won't be a problem in the future.
This would, this would practically, this wouldn't even need a variance under the current coordinates.
Correct, because it's...
It's just not a... Right where it's narrow, it's not sixty feet. That's all that's wrong.
Probably square footage wide, they're larger lots.
At the street, right.
You know, if you look at it.
It's just right here.
You can hardly see what it's...
That's the area, this area meets it, this area meets it, that area meets it. And the square footage is actually bigger than the other lots. They just didn't realize they had to have sixty on those things. And in today's, you would not have to as long as you meet the other things. So it would comply with the ordinance changes we're making.
But it said we, I just wanted...
Thanks for the things on time, or something like that, actually.
It said we okayed that, so we okayed it then, so I'm a lot...
We're okay with zoning for R six.
They're still bigger lots.
It says we...
Just got us more, it's just awkward.
We proved everything according to this here.
I thought we proved the final plan.
The sketch plan was also approved at the January fifteenth, twenty nineteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
So the sketch plan won't change?
Well, the sketch plan really, it wouldn't be detailed enough to show that it's sixty feet wide, right? It typically wouldn't show up on the sketch. You know what I mean? It's, a sketch plan's pretty rough.
There's only two lots. That's my biggest thing.
And it complies with our current standards.
He could cut one of them, cut one out and make the rest of them wider.
He could, but it, but it complies with the rest of our, our current standards, so I don't think we should go back and make them do that.
But I might vote for it.
Okay. All right. Any other, do we need, anybody from the audience that'd like to speak to this? Speaking for again?
For, I'm the developer, so.
I don't know if you have to speak in if you just want to.
No, 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 I was just reiterating. It is, you know, it does meet the current, under the current ordinance, it would not require the variance. It was, I guess, like an understood that sixty foot was at the building setback line, not at the road, but it wasn't detailed in the two thousand nineteen versus today's ordinance. So, you know, staff caught that, and we just want to get cleaned up moving forward so there's not any issues with that. It does meet the minimum lot requirement. It's actually, those are larger lots than the, than the minimum. And they do, it does meet the sixty foot at the setback line. It's actually a little larger than that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
When you're looking at breaking ground.
Sir?
When you're looking at breaking ground.
Soon. So if the final plat's recorded tonight under item twenty, then we'd be, you know, in December.
Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition to this variance request? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and have a motion.
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternate number one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows the request is approved. Item number fourteen is our second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Alex Long requesting a variance from section five point eight point six to allow for smaller lots in a R six subdivision located on Blue Jay Road, zoned R six, parcel number four one four, parcel number three in the fourth district.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the second reading, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows the second reading is approved.
Quick question. Tim, on the traffic light at twenty-one in McCall, did they give any kind of timeline? Which I know nothing happens, you know, fast, but...
Yeah, it's on a GDOT timeline.
Twenty fifty?
Well, it's, it helps that it, that we, we have the funding available on our side, but they still have to do the design, and so, and then tell us what the, you know, what our contribution is to it, so...
They have to do design for the turn lanes as well?
Yes.
Because right now, that is a huge need.
Yeah.
We, we can't even go in there and add a right turn lane, can we? Because it's on their property, right?
Well, yeah, because we'll be encroaching on their property. We'll be widening the encroachment, but the, you know, I can find out if, if we can move, if we can have them stage it, but I think we still, the thing that's going to take the longest is, is waiting on the, waiting on the plans for them. They've already, I mean, it's already approved, it's already, there's already a warrant for it. They have not shared any designs. We've asked them if they have any.
If there's something we could do there, I'm telling you, it would save accidents and, and injury and harm and move traffic, because I do that a lot, that road, obviously, being a little McCall road. And there's, if the first car is waiting to go left and they don't pull up far enough, everybody's got to wait till they finally shoot the gap. And so then everybody's getting more antsy, so when they get up there, they start trying to shoot the gap earlier now.
Right.
I, I'm thinking if you had a lane that, if GDOT can understand that it would really improve safety right now, they could stack about three cars in a right turn lane, then people could get around and move, a lot of people going right.
In, in actuality, the request that they're asking us for is a, it, it's a left turn only lane. However, since nobody really goes straight, right? The right turn on, it, it'll essentially be a right turn straight lane, which everybody will be going right. So I think we'd actually be, in order to align with across the street, we wouldn't be using the land on the right-hand side. We'd be using right-of-way on the left-hand side. So it's, we looked at, because we were looking at whether we had enough land to accommodate it, we believe we do. But it would essentially move the middle of the road, or the stripe in the middle of the road to the, to the north, not, not to the south, if that, if that makes sense.
I think a left turn only there would, it makes sense because then they, they want to go to Springfield, they can go on down, turn right at one nineteen or whatever. But I just know that if they could do something to allow a couple of lanes there, in the meantime, somehow, some temporary solution. I'm telling you, it would really move traffic and take away the antsy's that's causing people to shoot gaps.
It doesn't have a project number yet, but as that moves along, I could ask them if we could just simply, if the county could step in and do the lane first while they give us the lane design, at least on that side. And so we can get that sorted while, and wait for them to do the light, I mean, that's a possibility.
That would be really huge, I, I promise you, you'd see a lot better flow of traffic just from that, even without the light. That's item number twelve, fourteen finished up with fifteen, and new business consideration to approve to adopt the future land use map as a policy document of Effingham County. Tim, you taking that one? Steve?
No, he, he can, sure.
No, go ahead, Steve.
Sure. I'm gonna pass out the eleven by seventeen, okay? You've got it in your packet, but I thought I'd blow it up just a little bit for you. This is, shouldn't be a surprise to all of you, this is the very similar document verse, you know, with all the necessary tweaks that, that we've got based on feedback. Week, so if you have any questions on this, just let us know, we're, we'll try and get it on, on a GIS so you can view it, kind of at the street level. But like I said, take, you know, it's, this is basically what, what we discussed. If you have any questions or you get questions, just send them our way.
Quick question, the, the little business nodes or whatever, the circles, what do those represent? What's, is it a square footage or is it a quarter mile from the intersection?
Well, and, and they.
Is that specifically just kind of a general, this area?
Yeah, it's kind of the general area, and we, and in the comp plan, we may actually narrow that down a little bit.
Okay.
Because it's, just gets a little tricky because parcel lines differ.
Right, they're all the same size, I was just.
Yeah, around there. Yeah, so you might see, depending on the, the land, right?
Yeah, so we want to drive more intense use, whether it's commercial, multifamily, to those nodes. Where we have infrastructure and it's crossroads versus having them all over the area.
Would it be our goal to run water sewer to these nodes?
Most of them. Yes. You know, like the, like Shawnee has a node up there, but, you know, that's just simply because it's already, you know, it's already got the Dollar, well, it's got the Dollar General being built, it's already got the gas station, it's got commercial on the other side of twenty-one. So, you know, there are some areas, Egypt is another example, on, on seventeen. So they may have technically be a node, but they won't be getting water and sewer. But their commercial uses are going to be a lot lighter, like a, like a Dollar General or gas station.
So with, with this, the expectations, everybody can be shown on a map somewhere, ours and theirs and, and the general public.
And this will go through a process through the comp plan with more public opinion, but we need something that was updated that we could use to make the decisions from as a policy document. And that's what you're asking us now, is approve this as a policy document until we complete our total comp plan.
That's right, so we have something documented so that we can refer to, you know, when we, you know, when we're making decisions. It's not some, you know, something secret in a drawer somewhere, it's something that's available to the public.
And importantly, one thing that's interesting to the public is, you can see the purple is our industrial areas, which is a very small percentage of our total county. So it's good to see that, but also it gives us a reason to say no to industrial growth in our area now. Because this is what we've looked at, we've planned, we've designed, we've got the infrastructure planned to handle the, the warehousing, industrial in these areas. And it gives us a reason to say no in the future as well as yes to certain things based on actual land use plan.
Correct. And one thing that you'll notice is not in here is the cities. And so when the cities make their adjustments for their comp plans, because they have to be involved in the, in the comp plan revision next year, we'll just simply plug their data in there.
Okay.
And that we're looking for balance, you know, between everything, between residential and commercial and industrial, not just one area.
Right.
Alright, any other questions, discussion on land use map, because we are trying to find that balance? I know a couple commissioners I did, I got calls, people, hey, my taxes went down. I said, well, people complain a little bit about the warehousing, but we're getting revenues from that, and T-Splas allows us to do our transportation, so those two together.
It's nice to be able to point to that credit on the tax bills.
And I don't think we've seen the end of taxes coming down if we can keep a balanced digest between residential, industrial, and commercial. And not forgetting our agricultural people as well, but anyway, that's another discussion, is there a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number sixteen. Consideration to approve ACCG Retirement Plan Changes and Resolution Number twenty-three dash oh thirty to adopt the adoption agreement, amendment number two.
Alright, good evening, Sarah Mouseoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Tonight, we come before you just to ask that after our workshop and the retreat, we've made some changes to our plan document, increasing the match from the three percent to the five percent that everybody kind of was in agreement on, and eliminating that one-year waiting period to contribute, and then bringing our vesting from five years down to four years. So all that's attached, just so you could kind of see a bullet point. Do you have any other questions for me?
They're all good changes, any discussion or a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. So when does this take effect?
January first.
So we need to sign up for our five percent match?
Yes, sir, yes. Yeah, we're gonna put, we were waiting for it to get officially approved before we put that out to everybody, but that's going out soon, so thank you, staff is very excited.
Especially the routine staff too, to be able to have more in their retirement.
Oh, yes.
Alright, item number seventeen, consideration to approve the Maritime Health Amendment to add the prescription RX Smart Savings Program.
So a few weeks back, we finally approved a one-one amendment, and unfortunately, that kind of held up this five-one amendment. Maritime does apologize, there was some legal wording that they were trying to work out, so again, we've had this since May. We're just officially signing it, and with this, it gave us a three thousand dollar wellness credit.
Very good, any other questions, discussion?
Yes. Okay, we get this, this RX provider here. Do we have a, do we have a choice of our, in other words, do you have a choice of getting the generic or you get the cheaper one?
You have a choice, this is just helping people that have chronic stuff, disease management and all that to help with their, if you have like a three-month supply, they're just reaching out to individuals.
But some people, some people can't take the generic.
Yes, sir.
Generic medicine.
Yep, we have a couple employees that are under that situation, so we've worked with them. Correct, yes, sir, yep. We're not changing anything, she's giving us a wellness, yep.
Alright, any other questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously. Item number eighteen, consideration to approve a service contract between Stealth Partner Group LLC and Effingham County Board of Commissioners and approve Yoya Stop Loss?
Voya.
Yoya Stop Loss to aid in reduction of claims and cost.
Yes, so this, and I apologize to Ms. Stephanie, our broker, we've had a little transition, so we've had two account people in the last three months. So it's hard getting some of the information that we needed for the staff report, which is why it's pretty vague. But they were able to go back and negotiate, they did bring our fixed costs down by thirty percent. They are recommending we go with Voya this year, starting in January, instead of renewing with Sun Life. Sun Life is who we are currently with, their renewal originally came in at a twelve percent increase, and they negotiated that down to a negative two-point-two percent. But with Voya, they were able to get that down even lower, negative thirty-seven-point-three percent, projected savings of five hundred seventy-two thousand. Tim and I listened to a couple discussions on this. They are also saying that it will help us with our renewal for twenty-twenty-five as well, if we go ahead and make the switch. Because you guys remember, we had a rough period during COVID, so our stop loss really has come in handy. But unfortunately for renewal, it would cost us a lot to continue with them. And they did put out an RFP to twenty-four separate carriers.
So five million, five-point-seven millions, our stop loss above that, the larger insurance would kick in, that's what we're responding to.
Yes, sir.
Is that total?
It, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand per person, and then after that, stop loss takes over.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not likely to get there.
We've got a couple, it's, you know, I mean, thankfully, we don't have too much.
I mean, to the five million.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Not likely to get there. Well, I get the hundred and twenty-five, you get that, and when emergency room stay.
Right, yeah.
Alright, any questions, discussion, or motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer for alternative one, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, item number nineteen, consideration to approve to cancel the January second, two thousand twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting. We need discussion of this before we entertain a motion, because I understand we may have a problem with our planning. Tim, you want to?
Yeah, and, and I, I just wanted to see if it was, if it was possible, and it's all based on the availability. And I know the first meeting is very early in the year this year, but if you all are still out of town and we can't have a quorum, because we canceled obviously the second meeting in December, this would push the contents of three meetings to the second Tuesday, I'm sorry, the third Tuesday in January. And without knowing about this, we, when we did, had the planning board meeting, we, we scheduled to have those planning board items on the second. So we have plenty of time to re-notice, to put, put the ads in the newspaper again, you know, change the signs and get the word out. But I just wanted to check if, if you all were available on the second, we can, we can continue with those items. But if not, it's, we can make it work.
If we can have a quorum on the second, it'd be good not to have to go through the process of rescheduling and notifying the planning board.
Yes, sir.
So I guess that's the first question. I'm gonna be, once again, about seven hours away, so.
I'll be here.
But if you have a quorum, you can still do it.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
You have three.
Not sure about it yet.
I'm not sure either, I may be with family. I don't know though, I don't know when we're coming back.
It's just hard after holidays, if you're far out of town, getting back on the, the next day. So you got three of us that may not be here, three that would be, which would not be a quorum. And I, I was suggesting, we might could look at the following week, and, and that would give plenty of time to let the planning board or the constituents know who are planning on a planning meeting, put the signage up. Did we, did we, did we look?
Planning board. Yeah, it's planning board night.
But not for the things we'll be hearing.
But they're in the same ring.
Oh, they're in this room?
Yeah, they're in this room.
You should see what they do to your desk.
Okay, so that would not work.
Well, the joint meeting would be kind of cool.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is. I'd like not to have to come back, since I'll be with family on holiday.
The only thing I'm waiting on is see if my wife's better, so she can travel, if she can travel, we're gonna go somewhere. My little ones are now big ones, and I don't have much time with them, so I'm trying to.
Well, I mean, if we, if we have to cancel, it's probably, we should, I mean, we, we just have to let the folks know. I think if we probably have to bite the bullet and cancel, then.
We'd like to know now.
Yeah, we, we let them know now, and then we just push it to the, what is that, the sixteenth? Yeah, we just push it to the sixteenth, if that makes sense?
I can probably.
That would probably be the next meeting.
Our next meeting's on the nineteenth. So are you?
It's on the second.
It's the nineteenth, I'm looking at my calendar, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm looking at December, my, my bad. It is the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yeah. So we'll, we'll just, if we can have a quorum, we'll just, we'll just send the announcements, announcements out, and we'll, and we'll schedule, we got plenty of time to do that.
Are we expecting a lot of volume, and is it something we could cancel and be okay with, or you think?
Say it's pretty good volume.
We are. A lot of planning board?
Lot of everything.
Do not, do not put it with February's and make it one. That's happened before.
Really? And we got capital in February.
It's just too much information for one meeting.
Yeah, so we'll do the planning board on the second meeting of the month, and combine everything in one.
Let me just take, check this calendar one last time, see if I could.
I think it'll be okay, Mr. Chairman, this is not a new phenomenon, we do it all the time, it usually works out fairly well.
Yeah, we survived.
Yeah, we survived it, because I won't be here either.
That'd be, that'd be wonderful.
Let's just do that again at the next meeting as well, right?
Well, they, they, they want to know, so they can go ahead and let people know, they want to get their notices out.
Advertised and.
Personally, I'd be for canceling that meeting, that's my opinion.
That's fine, I just wanted to see if there was a possibility, but, but it doesn't sound like we have that option.
Fourth or fifth, even the third would be helpful, but I'm, I'm just getting there for New Year's and I gotta come right back.
No, 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 I completely, I, I, yeah, I think we, we just make it on the sixteen.
Okay, is that okay with everyone? Alright, well, just, let's see if that's okay with everybody, see if there's a motion to.
It's gonna be a three-in-one meeting.
We've, we've had some rough ones before.
You'll, you'll need to look at that agenda and see what you can move to another agenda, so it won't be three-in-one. There might be some things that aren't vital, not the planning side, but, because there's only gonna be one planning board meeting for us to dress, but there might be other agenda items that we could delay if we had to.
Put him off too, so it won't be so long.
Yeah, we could do that, and we could, you know, I'll make sure that the regular meeting side does not go anywhere near an hour. So we'll get as many things as we can done in that first hour without going over, then move to planning board.
Alright, well, let's see if the board's on board. Do we have a motion to approve the cancellation of the January second, two thousand twenty-four board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Loper to cancel that meeting, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing no knows the meeting would be canceled, and we'll have it on that sixteen, the regular scheduled business meeting. And with that, I think that, we got number twenty, a final plat and warranty deed for Pine Brook Phase One.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Samantha Easton, planner two. Alex Long has requested an approval for the final plat and infrastructure agreement for Pine Brook Phase One located on Blue Jay Road. EOM, the county attorney and staff have reviewed all the documentation. Everything appears to be correct and approved. The variance for the lot width was approved earlier in this meeting, and staff is recommending alternative one.
You've, you've got a handout there, does anybody have any questions, discussions, if you're going this final plat?
Yes, the same plat as before.
That's what, that's what we just went over, yeah, okay.
Same as the variance.
Yeah. No, the, mm, no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the final plat that's presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, well, that, that concludes our regular scheduled business. How about any reports from our commissioners or staff, we'll begin with our staff.
Yeah, I just have a couple of reports, um, on the rec side, um, Effingham County was well represented, uh, in the regional football, uh, finals this weekend, uh, Effingham County, uh, eight U-Boys, uh, was runner-up. The, they lost, eh, to Thompson. Uh, Effingham County Ten and Under, uh, won, uh, the regionals, uh, against, uh, Reiken, and they'll be going to states, and then, uh, what did I say, Twelve and Under also run, uh, the regionals, uh, also against Reiken. So we pretty much dominated the, uh, the, Effingham County dominated the region, uh, and so, uh, we'll keep you up to date on that, and hopefully, we'll get some of the kids in here, uh, for a photo when, uh, when the season's done. Uh, lastly, I want to make an introduction, uh, we, uh, hired a, uh, new, uh, IT director, uh, in the county. Chris is, um, uh, uh, going to be taking on the role, uh, for, as deputy in charge of infrastructure for all the changes that we're making. But I wanted to introduce Noel Webb. Uh, Noel, uh, is a, uh, many of you know the name, um, uh, and, or the person. Uh, Noel is a lifelong Effingham County resident, uh, his work history goes from, uh, the school board, uh, to, I think, the port.
Am I right on that?
And then, uh, but also, uh, the last eleven years, he's, uh, been IT director of Daniel's Defense. So, uh, he brings a lot of experience, and, um, he's, uh, uh, excited to get started, and we welcome him.
Just one question, can you get us a discount at Daniel Defense?
It's not the first time.
Fortunately, none of you.
Uh, but that's, uh, that's all I have.
It's not going to be a great team of who we already have there as well, so that, that should work real good. We'll have some of the best IT around, but this partnership sounds good. Anything else?
That's all, that's my report.
Anything else from the other staff? We're not looking good. All right, let's throw it on the room.
I don't have anything.
Good, okay.
Um, I don't have anything, I'm, um, I'm going to, to the next Springfield meeting, uh, council meeting, just to discuss DRT, and just kind of go before them and, you know, show some support for them, really.
They get an update, I guess, via email on that today.
From?
From DRT.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're going to get that information out, we'll make it clear that it came from DRT.
Yeah.
Um, but it does include an email, contact email for them, which is helpful.
Yeah. We're still plugging away at trying to resolve that.
I, I know, it's PR.
Yeah, that's right.
Sounds good, anything else? I'll give you a real quick update, uh, from the, um, Study Committee the Governor set up on service delivery that I'm serving on. A little frustrated with the committee, I'm not sure we're going to get a.
What is this?
Service Delivery Strategies Committee, the conflict that counties and cities have been having over the years with debate, spending hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars at times, on consultants and professional fees and, and, uh, so the Governor's set up a committee trying to get a panel of about ten people, there's about four or five of us that are legislators, you know, I mean, uh, commissioners or council members, and about four or five legislators. Of course, GMA, ACCG, and tons of public are there from different cities and counties. We've had three meetings, we have, we're having one more come up, they're trying to get some legislation, and just to tell you where it's going to go right now. And, and I'm pushing for them to, to make more substanti- substantive input into this, deal with the real issues. I feel like, is my personal opinion, the committee and some of us on the committee feel like, overall, they're avoiding getting into the weeds on this. And I'm going to keep pushing that envelope, because we got to help counties and cities not fight so much. But they're looking at two things, uh, and one I don't agree with, I'm going to probably vote against it, and one I'm going to approve, they're looking at beefing up the sanctions. In other words, right now, a judge can set the sanctions aside, and we actually have counties, and we had that in our own area fifteen years ago, when we couldn't agree, and the judge set aside the sanctions, and it went on for four or five years before we had a service delivery agreement. They want to eliminate that, and I agree with that. We're going to try to put a, ask legislators to put a time period, so it'd be like eighteen months, the judge can not remove the, abeyance of the sanctions any longer than a certain period of time. And that will put pressure on, at least come to the table and negotiate, knowing that you're going to lose some funding. We don't have that problem, because we're negotiating very well with our cities, and we're getting along very well. But I want to see these other cities do better. Another thing they're looking at doing is taking away, uh, the veto power of one city that, um, may disagree. So if they had four cities that agreed, and the county agrees, and this one city doesn't agree, then they don't have to, no longer have to be on there, even if they're the county seat, and even if they have a population of nine thousand. I disagree with that, I think that, uh, I only think it's constitutional, so I'm asking to evaluate that. I don't think you can take, you're talking about a contract? You can't make a contract without somebody at the table signing and agreeing to it, so I'm surprised they're even doing that, so I'm probably going to vote against that. Um, addition, but that's one of the two things that's come out of the committee so far, is making aware of that, um, for the future. Anyway, it's a, a lot of time and a lot of energy, I'm not sure we're getting very far down the road, but we'll, we'll keep plugging. Anything else for the good of the county, or?
Yeah, I got something for executive session for the five minutes.
You have a motion to go to executive session, discuss personnel property, pending litigation?
Removed.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Loper to go to executive session, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, we are in executive session.